You ready, Pedro? Good evening, everybody. And welcome to the June 21st, 2017 Board of Selectments meeting. We are not, we don't have Richie here tonight, so it's just going to be T and I. So I would ask everybody to stand up and pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance. Opening comments, T?
I thought, I thought the Memorial Day Parade was a big hit. You'll have to remind me on the Gettysburg Address, who was that?
Gregory Keane.
Gregory Keane?
Yeah.
Outstanding job at the cemetery. The whole thing went real well, in spite of the fact it was windy and cold. But it went well. And last night, we attended here, the Moving On Ceremony for the sixth grade, which was packed. And that went well. Congratulations. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to be a little long-winded, so, great. Okay, so, last night, the town hall was fortunate to have the Moving On Ceremony. I think it's the first time they've ever done it. It was really nicely decorated, and attendance, which you could imagine, was very well attended. With very proud parents and family. T, all the officials were there. The sixth grade graduates, whose names I'd like to announce are, these are the graduates from the sixth grade class, and they were really great. Torrin Anderson, Ethan Angusbuck, Madison Bargette, Braden Bosadian, Colby Godwin, Jesse Goodwin, Elise Hammerick, Gregory Keane, Ronan Locke, Mia Raphael, Michael Riling, Mia Sheena, Simon Wabno, and Avery York. Out of all those, of those sixth grade students, Simon Wabno was awarded the Patsy Buke, who was one of my teachers, Science Award, and the Lowland Award for Proficiency in Mathematics. The Thomas M. Levitt Citizenship Award, American Legion Post Number 215, more time at G. Robbins, was awarded to Mia Raphael. The State Legislature Recognition Award was given to Gregory Keane for his recitation of the Gettysburg Address, which was perfect. The President's Education Award was given to Colby Godwin and Simon Wabno. I think it's important that we read these off, because they, they work so hard, and it's nice that I think that the town recognizes the school in this manner. So, I would also like to announce the recipients of the high school students who received scholarships last night. The Garden Club Scholarship Award was awarded to Carol Wabno, who's attending UMass Amherst. The Women's Club Scholarship was awarded to Maggie DeBrandi, who was attending Lafayette College. The Nahat Youth Soccer Scholarship was awarded to Max Carbone, who's attending Wentworth. And the Tommy Hutton Christmas Parade Scholarship was awarded to 12 recipients. This just shows you how much money was donated to the, to the Christmas parade. Joseph Marini is going to Fairfield. Ariella Nardisi attending Arizona State University. Harrison Hoska attending American University. Mark Cameron attending Mass College of Pharmacy. Brian Frontholz attending University of Pittsburgh. Maggie DeBrandi attending Lafayette College. Max Carbone attending Wentworth Institute of Technology. Kate Caddigan attending Providence College. Amanda Savinsky attending University of Mass, Amherst. Caroline Munley attending University of Massachusetts, Amherst. Thomas McDevitt attending Worcester State University. And Michelle Conners attending Elon College. The Bob and Janet Munley Memorial Scholarship was awarded to Kate Caddigan attending Providence College, and Maggie DeBrandi attending Lafayette College. The Lions Club Education Grant was awarded to Ariella, Ariella Nardisi, attending Arizona State. And the Nahat Teachers Association Scholarship was awarded to Carol Wabno attending UMass Amherst. And Lebrunna Brodsky, who is very dear to all of our hearts, Memorial Scholarship was awarded to Ariella Nardisi, attending Arizona State University. As was mentioned last night, our superintendent, Tony Perintozzi, and our principal, Kevin Andrews, our community is most certainly proud of the outstanding students we are sending forward, and how privileged we are to count them as our youngest and finest community members. They really did a great job. And, and one thing I also want to add is, we just lost a member of our school committee, Mike Quigley, who was very instrumental in bringing this new...
Administrator?
Crew, and we call it. And I can tell you that the school has done an unbelievable turnaround. It's just great. It's wonderful to go there. I've read there a couple of times. It's just, it's just a wonderful place to visit. And Mike's moving out of town, so he had to resign, and I'm really going to miss him. And hopefully, he'll come back. He says he's gone, so, I thank him for his time.
If I could, Enzo, what I'd like to also kind of hearken back to exactly what you said. The addition of Tony Perintozzi as the superintendent, and Kevin Andrews as the principal, has been remarkable.
Oh, yeah.
The turnaround has been phenomenal, and the, the presentation last night is an example of that. The fact that we're integrating the town and the school together so well. So, thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Tony.
Okay. We have some minutes that we have to approve. Approve minutes of the, I'll entertain emotionally, approve the minutes of 5:417, 5:1817. Executive session minutes, 5:1817, and release the executive session minutes of 3:0217 and 3:0917. Mr. Taylor?
I move the Board of Selectment vote to approve the minutes of 5:417, 5:1817, executive session minutes of 5:1817, and to release the executive session minutes of 3:0217 and 3:0917.
Okay, I'll second that for discussion. Discussion?
No?
Okay, there's some I want to change. So, I'd like to just table this for tonight. Is that okay?
Okay.
In other words, you just, you want to do them all at once?
Yeah, I want to go over them. I think there's a couple of mistakes in them.
Couple of three are ready to go.
And we'll just table until the next meeting?
Fine.
Okay. Citizens Forum.
Jen McCarthy. Good evening. For those who don't know me, I'm Jen McCarthy, and I'm in charge of running the fireworks for Fourth of July, which it's hard to believe it's only 12 days away. And so, I just wanted to give you a little update and get some more information out there to the town. It is July 4th. They will be shot from Bailey's Hill at 9:15, right around there, they'll go off. We have had a meeting, the town administrator, the police chief, the fire chief, and the DPW supervisor, and the fireworks company, and have gone over all the traffic patterns, and everything will be pretty much the same as years pass. And many people have generously been donating. We are on our way to reaching our goal, but we're not to our goal yet. So, I just wanted to let people know that we're getting close, but we're not there. So, I still would appreciate people reaching out to make donations. I will be in the bank parking lot this Friday night from about 4:00 to 7:00. I'll be at Dunkin' Donuts Saturday morning from 6:00 a.m. till about 8:45. And then, I'm going to go up to the Nahat Village Church, because they're having their flea market. So, I'll be there with my shirts till 2:00 o'clock on Saturday. I'll be back down in front of Dunkin' Donuts on Sunday morning, 6:00 to 9:00. And my number's going to go up on the flash and board. It will be on the website, so people can certainly call. And I just wanted to, I know at the bottom of your agenda, you have the Ocean View for donations. And I wanted to mention that there are many businesses in town that have been supporting the fireworks. The Ocean View being one of them, Quinna Lynn, Irving &amp; Son, Wilson Brothers, Nahat Associates, Hatfield Lawn Care, and G&amp;J Towing have stepped up so far. So, I'm excited for that, and I'm excited for the people who have donated, and I'm looking forward to a great show again. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. And again, you're doing a great job, you always do. I know it's a lot of work, and we thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Anybody else in the Citizens Forum? Okay, moving on to the town administrators' report?
Great. The first item we have tonight is public hearing, and it has to do with the Logan Airport and the traffic patterns that we're experiencing. We have Bob D'Amico here, who is going to help us with the conversation. Bob is our Logan Airport liaison. We also have representatives of Representative Crichton's office, and Tom, excuse me? Senator McGee's office, yes. Thank you both for coming tonight. We really appreciate it. And I'll turn it over to Bob to kind of walk us through the substance of the public hearing, and to kind of lay out the details. Yes, if you could come to the mic, please.
Hi, my name is Bob D'Amico, I'm a Nahat resident. I have some handouts up at the desk, if anybody's interested, just to sort of visualize what I'm about to say. And the, we're all aware of the increase in noise on the departures of runway four right, which cross over the causeway, and, in my opinion, much too soon than they should. Basically, just let me give you a little bit of a background. In 2002, the Port Authority got the approval to build runway 1432. Within that approval, they had a proviso to do a noise study for the whole airport, which they did. I worked with the FAA. Their representative was from Oklahoma City. And the reason why they picked him is, that's where you go when you're trained to be in air traffic control, Oklahoma City. And together, we worked on the installation of what they call waypoints. That's what the handout shows you. Not for Nahat, but the way waypoints actually work. They're a hardwired point on the earth that the pilot knows he or she is approaching when they get to this waypoint. And in 2007, they came out with a directive decision on the noise study that said that aircrafts are not to overfly Nahat and cross over the causeway. Well, that's all well and good, and the waypoints were put in place as they are as I speak. The problem is, the pilots are turning too soon before they get to the waypoint. That is the crux of the problem. There's two kinds of waypoints. There's the fly-by waypoint, and the fly-over waypoint. Fly-over waypoint is kind of obvious. You've got to go over it, and then turn. The fly-by waypoint, you can be a mile away from it, but you're still considered on course. That is our problem. If they flew closer to that waypoint before they turned, we wouldn't be here tonight discussing this. Secondly, if it was a fly-over waypoint, there would be no problem at all. And all this would be for naught. Now, it's not that Nahat doesn't get noise from other operations. They get arrivals on 33 left, 15 right, 27, where they just skirt the edge of the island on the approach to Logan. And there's really no need of that when you live on an island surrounded by all this water, with a two-mile causeway. And the reason for that is something I can't explain. But since they're on approach, they're at cut power. So, they tend to be just like a distant noise, and that you're not going to be upset about. Four-right departure, different story. They're at full throttle, those engines are screaming to get out of here as soon as they can. Now, why do they turn early? Well, number one, they, they're worried about their own time performance. And the sooner they get out of here, the quicker they get to the destination. Secondly, fuel. The shorter the flight, the more fuel they save. So, there's a method to the madness. This isn't an accident. This is all planned. So, the challenge that we have is, how do we get them to turn closer to the waypoint that's, has been there since 2007, or change it from a fly-by to a fly-over waypoint? And my suggestion is, if we can't see any results in an improvement on these fly-by waypoint turns, then I think we have to really take a stronger stand and demand that they go to a fly-over waypoint. Fly-over waypoint, our problems are solved. The best thing about this is, it does not impact one more individual. The FAA and the Port Authority are masters. Trust me, I worked at the Noise Abatement Office for eight years. So, I know what their ulterior motives are. It's the airlines, it's the airport, and the FAA. They work all together, like the Three Stooges. Only the Three Stooges are a little bit more intelligent. But the bottom line is, there is a way to fix this problem without impacting one individual. And that's a gift that we have. Usually, when a community is impacted by noise, well, you've got to shift it somewhere else, then somebody else gets the noise. When I represented Mayor Manino, I was the chairman of the CAC for, for one year, and then he says, "You've got to get off. You can't be the chair of this committee." I says, "Why not?" He goes, "What happened to Roxbury? He was fighting South Boston. What happened to Rosendale? He was fighting Hyde Park. Whose side do you choose?" I said, "I never thought of it." So, I was forced to resign, but I was actually the chair of the former CAC. So, I've been at this for 49 years, since I was a kid. And I worked, like I said, at the Noise Abatement Office, and representing Mayor Manino and Mayor Flynn on the old CAC. So, I've been there, and I've done that. When I see this, there's absolutely no need of that at all. And the only thing I can think of is economics, and the amount of, of time is saved by turning before they get to these fly-by, fly-by waypoints. We're not asking for the waypoints to be changed. That's when you run into problems. But if they can fly closer or over it to, to those waypoints that are hardwired, and eventually, all the aircraft are going to be hitting these waypoints by satellite. It's already starting to change. Aircraft are going to satellite navigation rather than land-based electronic navigation, because that's the wave of the future. And that'll, I mean, that should not be happening even with land-based electronics, because the pilot knows where he or she is at that early point, because it's a straight shot runway heading, and that's the first turn you make. And does it make sense to go over the edge of an island when you've got two miles to play with? Those waypoints were put there to prevent that from happening. But little did I ever realize that a fly-over waypoint is far more effective than a fly-by waypoint, and that's what that shows. But even if they went by the fly-by waypoint, if they turned closer to it, there would never be a problem. And I'm hoping that something can come of this, this meeting tonight, because if I learned one thing in my close to half of a century experience, is this is no longer a noise abatement issue, it's a political issue. This has now become politics. And I know firsthand, the squeaky wheel gets the oil. Calling Mass Port and the FAA is a waste of your time. You've got to call your state and federal officials. You've got to hit Mass Port from the top down. The FAA cannot change the flight trajectory at the Port Authority's approval. The Port Authority is the landlord, the FAA is only a tenant. The only thing the FAA does is move airplanes. Once that aircraft moves away from the gate, the FAA is in control. But the, the Port Authority are the ones, they call the shots. The FAA cannot change anything from a flight perspective without getting permission from the Port Authority first. And they are the most political agency in this state by far. Trust me, I know. So, you have to call your state and federal elected officials. And believe me, if you hit them from the top down, you'll see results. That's all I really have to say. If there are any questions?
T?
I agree 100%. 99% of what I experience as a selectman is politics.
Yeah.
Even though it's my second year.
I work in Washington City Hall, I know all about it.
Yeah, you know all about, I agree, we've got to go from the top down.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you for that.
Okay, and like I said, this is something that I've been involved with since 1968. So, I, I've been, been there, done that, and I know what works, and I know what doesn't. Calling the noise abatement line does nothing.
So, thanks, Bob. And you're recommending that we let everybody know to call state rep?
Absolutely. I, I think the residents of Nahat have to call the state and federal elected officials to let them know that we have a problem, and it can be solved without affecting one person. Amy Corbett would have let her back to, to the town, "If we change it fly-by to a fly-over, we'll be pushing the noise miles to the north." That's a damn lie. That's not true at all. So, I mean, I don't know why she would say that. But they like to pit community against community, so you have to be aware of that. So, whenever you call up anyone to say, "Look, we're not trying to push our noise on anybody," because if you do, then you'll lose right off the bat. All we want is noise relief, we know we have, and I'll be glad to meet with anybody at any time to discuss this, how we can fix this problem and not affect one eardrum.
Push our noise over the ocean.
Bob, if I could, does it help to actually call, have a, people call in and register their complaint with the Mass Port or?
You can. Just don't expect anything. I mean, you can, if, if you want, if you want the numbers to be there.
Yeah.
But, believe me, it goes into the circular file. They could not care less.
Right.
But does it help just to have the numbers, or is it just?
Um, not really.
Okay.
Not really. But it doesn't hurt.
Okay.
Because it shows that there's a problem, but is it going to solve the problem? Absolutely not. I know I done it. It's not going to help the problem. You can do it, and it won't hurt, but it's still going to be there. You have to get political. Your state and federal elected officials can help us.
My, my recommendation is that the Board of Selectmen, along with the town administrator, get ahold of Tom and Brendan. I marched with them in the parade, and they were talking about the noise abatement. The senator and the representative, we have to go from the top down. That's my recommendation.
Believe me, I know, I've, I've been a part of that.
The rest of it, I agree.
It, it's just window dressing.
Yeah.
Believe me, the Noise Abatement Office is only a shield to protect the higher-ups from hearing all of these complaints. That's all they have, is a buffer.
Like a sandcastle on Coast Guard Beach.
I, I did it, that's how I know. Don't talk to us about it, just do what you, that's what you're paid for. And that's what the office basically exists for, is to buffer the higher-ups from hearing all of this, all of these complaints.
Thank you.
Thanks. And we can, we'll include Seth Moulton's office in that. And maybe I can give out Brendan's cellphone number.
That's terrible.
I'm just kidding. George, George Maholden?
I agree pretty much with Bob said, except for one thing. These complaints that you call, the noise abatement over at Mass Port, I think is very important because of the numbers. Recently, they did a report on Channel 5 about, I think it was Milton, who had over 8,000 calls about the planes flying over their particular town. And I think that Mass Port woke up and saw the, the problem when they heard about 8,000 phone calls. I myself have made hundreds upon hundreds upon hundreds upon hundreds of phone calls. And I think that the people in this room, if they don't know the number, which is 617-561-333, three, I think, four threes, call up and complain, tell them that the planes are flying either over Little Nahat, or too close to Little Nahat. I used to think that aircraft noise is unhealthy, because it is. Aircraft exhaust is unhealthy, it is. You can have, request a copy of the complaints you've sent home, and that's what I have here, is copies of the complaints. And I think along with getting the McGee and Seth Moulton, and also Senator Elizabeth Warman involved in this, because she, I think, is a big component of this also, like you say, from the higher-up. But I do think that John Cupple, by calling into the Noise Abatement Office over, over in East Boston Logan Airport, will play a role in trying to get these planes to, basically, they're flying north to make, like Bob said, their waypoint, make them turn right, which is east, a little further than they are, because they're kind of doing it right over the tides, and they skirt Little Nahat, sometimes they fly right over my house. And like Bob said, you, you, you get lip service over there. They, they've told me, "Well, Mr. Warman, you really can't tell if the plane's overhead." And I'm looking up and speaking to the gentleman at the same time, and they're telling me, "You can't judge distance." Well, I can look up over my head, see a plane flying over my head, I know it's over my head. So, again, what Bob said, we have a unique situation here, we have a two-mile expanse of ocean. So, if we ask them to turn a little further north, to the right, to the east, we're not impacting any other town by putting excess noise onto their, their community. It's just putting out in the middle of Nahat Bay, Long Beach, Lynn Beach, over the halfway house, where, where they say they are going, but they're not, and they don't believe us. So, again, like Bob said, and you, you kind of reiterated, that it's going to come from the top down, but also, I think from the bottom up is very important also. So, I would like the people, like I said, to give them that number, call, request a copy of the complaint to be sent home, and you can even ask for a callback, and one of the people that are a little bit higher up than the people taking the phone call, will call you back and talk to you. And I think if we do that enough, they might get the, the, I don't know what the word I'm looking for, but get the gist of it, that we're having a problem over here. I don't sit there and call, because I have nothing better to do, or just to, to, you know, to bother the people over there. There's a legitimate problem here, that the aircraft noise is unhealthy, my blood pressure goes up, you've got to turn the TV up, turn it down, the, the exhaust is going somewhere, well, guess where it's going? It's going in my house, in my windows, all over my cars, all over my lawn, all over everybody's cars, lawns, lungs, the whole nine yards. And it's a big problem. And something's got to be done about it, and I think we hit the nail on the head by getting the, the three people, Moulton, McGee, and Warman involved in this, and let Mass Port know that there's a problem. And it's a very easy solution. I'm a very simple man, and I like to keep things simple. And also, this is just make the planes fly another 1,000 feet or 2,000 feet north before they make their right hand, turn east, and everybody will be happy. So, thank you.
Just want to say one thing. With the fly-by waypoint, you can be one to two miles away from it when you make the turn, and the FAA considers you on course. So, you can be one to two miles away from that waypoint, and they're fine with that. So, a fly-by waypoint is a little risky, because you can be one to two miles away from it.
Because you, you know, one to two miles, Nahat's very small, so, being over the causeway, you might be over somebody's house. Mr. Chairman, they should go to the speaker. Yeah. Come up to the, if, if, people in town complain that they can't hear, so we'd like you to come to the microphone next time, please. Pam, did you want to? Pam Wilson?
I wondered whether or not it's listed on the town website as who to call when you have a problem with airplane noise? I just looked, I don't think it's there, can we add it?
We're going to put that there.
And also, add number one, the phone number to call. And I called it this past week, I don't know if they're using a different runway, but all of a sudden, I'm hearing a lot of noise. And I live on the northeastern side of town. And I called, I put my complaint in, and then he said, "Do you want a receipt?" And I said, "Yeah." And I'd given all my information, and he had to take it all again. So, obviously, he was throwing it away. So, ask for them to send you a, a copy of your complaint, which is ridiculous, but, in any event, can we also list, first, the phone number, and secondly, our representatives' where to contact them, so that it's an easy job for anyone who wants to make a complaint? So, and whether or not we list the fly...
Waitpoints?
Waitpoints? That needs to be complained.
You put that on the website?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
The waypoints?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, good.
I'm Megan Hamel, Senator Tom McGee's Chief of Staff. Thank you for having us. And John Ford is here from Rep. Crichton's office as well. And I just wanted to assure everybody that we are well aware of the issue. It has been raised to us. We have had multiple conversations with Mass Port, which is the state agency that has, I guess, a seat at the table for this problem. I think that the problem that we're running into is that Mass Port says that it's an FAA problem, as you, as you stated, you know, once the airplanes are off of the airport grounds, that is considered the FAA problem. But I think having the specifics in this handout is going to be very helpful in making a specific ask versus just saying to them, you know, "We're hearing complaints from our constituents in Nahat about the air traffic noise," and not having something tangible to be able to relay to them. So, this is very helpful, and we will go back to them. We have been also working with Congressman Moulton's office because of the FAA connection, and that would fall under their jurisdiction. So, I will definitely be circling back with him tomorrow on it. But I just wanted to assure everybody that we are definitely on top of the issue, and, you know, we'll continue to work for you. I don't know that there'll be necessarily a very quick fix to it, because it seems like there are multiple people and multiple agencies involved in it, but we will do our best to, to fix it for you. So, thank you. And both of our offices' contact information is on the legislature website too, which is malegislature.gov, and then you can just search our names, McGee and, and Crichton, and all of our clients. And then you can just search our names, McGee and, and Crichton, and all of our contact info, email, phone number is there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I urge everybody to call with your representatives, and say something to them. Say how you feel, and they'll get things rolling. George?
Yes, again, George Mulholland, 6490 in the hot mass. We keep hearing about the FAA, FAA. Is there anybody in the FAA that we might be able to get involved in this? Instead of the state representative, is there someone in the FAA we could get in touch with, though? The, the representatives, if you get in touch with them, let them know, and kind of circumvent Massport, if it's an FAA problem? Why don't we get the FAA involved?
George, I think we've had trouble getting them involved. It's really been a finger-pointing exercise. And so, I think what we'll do is we'll reach out to our state and federal reps to help us to find the individuals we do need to speak with and draw them into the conversation.
And I, and I like the idea that, I forget your name again, I'm sorry, but putting it on the website, that the numbers you can call, and again, to get, get copies of these reports, because I do think it's going to be important down the road to have these. So, when we do convene again about this, we can have some ammunition in our hands that, hey, listen, we're not just talking about this. Here's solid proof. I don't care what the airport says. This is what the airport sent home to me. So, I have proof that this is happening. So, I, I think that from the bottom up, from the top down, is, is probably the best way to go.
Yep.
Fair enough. Yes, sure.
This'll be the last time I speak, I promise. But Jeff authored three letters to the FAA, Amy Corbett. And like Mary Ellen said at Town Hall, all they get back is a lot of gobbledygook. It's all technical garbage that no one understands what the hell they're talking about. But we tried. We did try to get the FAA involved, and all we got back was rubbish in return. So, Jeff did try, three times. So, I don't think contacting the FAA at this point is going to really be much help. Remember, the Port Authority controls the FAA, what they do. They're the main culprit here, not the FAA. But Jeff did order three letters, and look where it got us.
All right. Well, I can assure you, we're going to stay on topic for everybody. We will stay on topic with Tom and Brendan and Seth Moulton's office. And I won't give out Brendan's cellphone number.
We will all cell them on the website.
Yeah, we're going to put them all on the website. This, this complaint line, the 561-3333. The state and federal rep, you know, all of our representatives' numbers, who to complain to, who to talk to, and, and, you know, you can call us every now and then.
We'll have an action, you know, an action also.
Sure. Yeah, I don't see why not. Yeah.
Six one seven.
Six one seven, right.
Yep. We'll also put on the white point article that you have, Bob, so that people can understand the specific issue. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other public, any other public comment?
I'm sorry? Go ahead.
Any other public comment at this point? Okay, great. Thank you.
I imagine they're all tired of calling.
Yeah, I would imagine as well.
I can, I can feel that.
And I want to thank Senator McGee's office and Representative Crichton's office for attending tonight. We really appreciate it, and we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is this, each ti, each year, we, about this time, come to the selectmen seeking authorization or votes to follow-up borrowing that is authorized at the annual town meeting. This year, we have a unique twist, is that we're seeking the, the borrowing authorization through bond counsel, as well as an emergency borrowing for the sewer emergency. So, we actually have two items here that we've rolled into one package for efficiency purposes. But we have four authorized borrowings at the annual town meeting. Those are new borrowings. And then we also have the debt schedule that we're rolling forward as well, which is our traditional action each year. That sum total is about $2.9 million. Then we also have the second item, which is the emergency borrowing at $1 million, and that was authorized by the state. So, tonight, what you have before you is bond counsel recommended motions for authorization. We also have the paperwork that you would need to sign. And again, this is traditional, and what this does is move forward our authorization in such a way that we can act upon it at some future point. So, you have a motion before you that is simplified, because what it does is we will attach the series of motions that bond counsel has recommended with your single motion that you have. And then we also have the town clerk here, who has the paperwork that we would need to follow through.
Gotcha. I move the Board of Selectmen vote to adopt and approve the votes provided by bond counsel and attach them as an exhibit to the minutes.
Okay. I will second that motion for discussion. Discussion?
No, I understand it.
Okay. I, I understand it also. So, those are always a favor?
Aye.
All right. I would ask, though, at this time, that instead of signing them now, Jeff, that we wait till after the meeting? Because it does take some time.
Oh, oh, sure, sure. That's fine. If, if, yeah. Okay, great. Thanks, Peggy.
So, we can move along with the meeting then.
Yep. Great. So, moving along. Next item is that at the, one of the past selectmen meetings, we talked about setting the special town meeting for this fall. And I provided you two timelines that work back from October 28th and November 4th. Now, those are just two dates that were randomly selected by the selectmen at the time of the discussion. It gives you an idea, looking at these timelines, kind of are, are starting and stop points. And so, if you were to want to move the date, you can move it to any number of dates, it's just that these two are the ones you selected earlier. So, if you could either select one of these, so that we can start to plan for that date, or offer us a, a third option.
I think we started a little late. The committee's finally been appointed.
Correct.
But I would suggest that go to the latter date.
November 4th?
November 4th, and maybe even later than that.
I, I say we hold off on, on a date, but because we, I, it's summer, they have five months max, or less than that.
Yeah.
Why don't we have, wait to see how the committee goes, and they can come before us, maybe in a month or two, and we can, as long as we have enough time.
I think that's fine. What this, what this does is, I will pass this on to the committee, so they can begin to see the progression of the dates. So, the two timelines that you see here call out when reports have to be brought back to the selectmen, when the selectmen have to open and shut the warrant. So, it gives you kind of a timeframe. And I think we can easily wait and choose a date later.
But it may be, it may be advantageous to give them the November 4th one. And say, and say, "Hey, you let us know." Is that okay with you, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, it is. Absolutely.
Let us know if you want to push it into later in November.
Okay.
We don't want to rush it.
This has to be done correctly.
Right.
Yep. No, I very much agree. So, okay, I'll pass this information on as a November 4th, with that understanding. So, that's great. And then also, we've invited the committee, as they've been appointed. You have a list of the committee members, and then you also have the motion that was compiled from the town meeting. At this point, you had asked them, the members of the committee, to come to you, so that you could give them their charge and speak to them about moving forward.
Okay. I have a couple of questions about the, the letters that they got.
Mm-hmm.
The letters are different than the motion. And we had met downstairs to discuss the differences. But 3D is now back to the motion.
Correct.
That the town clerk had done.
Correct.
But in the letter that went out to you people, you have in the middle, with the committee to be appointed by the town moderator, consisting of one member to be selected by each selectman, and the following members to be appointed by the town moderator. A, that's not how I look at it. B, twice, it says, appointed by town moderator. So, this was very, very confusing, and we had, my recollection from downstairs was that it would be settled, so that when the letters went out, that they would jive with, this is the, what we have in front of us here is the town clerks, how the town clerk saw this, because it was a very confusing meeting. I came out of the meeting saying, "Okay, what is the motion?" And I get up before the town, and I got a little slap around, but that's okay. That's why I'm here. It's all politics, folks. So, to have to be appointed by the town moderator down there twice, doesn't make any sense. So, if you check your letters, you'll see that in the middle. And I, I, how did that go out?
Yeah, it's unfortunate. And I didn't actually check them before they went out. And we had talked about sending out the, this original. So, I will make sure that we send out a corrective letter for them, so that they understand that this is the item they're following. Substantially, the message is the same with that confusion. So, let me send this back out to correct it. And I'll actually provide that at their first meeting.
Please. Because the, the town clerk has, is, is sort of the, she has final say on this. The town clerk has final say on this. And when we left the meeting downstairs, it was that it would be ironed out. Then when I saw that all the letters were sent out, and we got a copy of the CCs, it was different. I don't want anything different. I don't want anything different about this. I want it all to be the same, because it's all politics. And Bob, you're right on. It's all politics. However, at the bottom line, the moderator did do his job.
He did.
So, but I just want to make sure, A, and B, that, that everything comes out as, as the town clerk said.
Yeah, so we'll provide this at their first meeting, so they understand the, the clarity. But maybe you can speak to, at this point, kind of what this speaks to, and kind of what you would ask the committee to do.
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
Why, thank you. What we have is... They all have their letters. Such planning shall be conducted by conceptual development of the property through a public process and plan to be overseen by the Board of Selectmen and the committee. Each selectman had a, an appointment, appointed someone, and then the town moderator then pointed someone from FinCom Planning Board, two abudders, one zoning board of appeals. I think they're a total of eight, right?
Correct.
Total of eight. And whatever plan comes up with, whatever plan the group comes up with, must go to a special town meeting, which will be the same special town meeting that we're trying to set up here. And it will be before any sale or other action is authorized. So, your plan will come up, and, and whether the town hall is full or not, and people will, whatever. My gist of it is, and I have been against, I, I want houses there, is what I want. And so, but I want you people to do whatever your group decides. That's how I look at it. As far as I was concerned, this was taken right down to a parcel of land, and then you people decide what the parcel of land is. I wasn't really in favor of that at the town meeting, but maybe that's the way to go, is we set up, you decide the four-acre, a little more than four-acre parcel of land, what needs to be done there. Because you, we have to live with whatever we do. And so, this is very, very important to me, and to the town. And the town gets to have a say at the end in November. Thank you.
Okay. So, yes, I, very true. And I'd like to, at this point, introduce them. And I, I have the utmost confidence that they'll come up with a plan, whether it's they, they're torn down, or they're sold as individual, or whatever it is. I think we have a real good committee. And I think that they're, they're willing to work. And as far as the special town meeting, you know, I'm almost willing to say that we'll probably wind up owing to the annual town meeting, if it's, if need be, with it, because I, I don't want to rush it. And I think, like you said earlier, through the summer, that might be a problem, because everybody takes time off. Actually, one of the committee members isn't even here. He's, he's away. So, with that, we can introduce them?
Sure.
Okay. Pam Manaty was my pick. She's here. Stephen Viviano is here. Emery Passanese is on it. Keith Barber, Mark Collinane, and Tom. Tom's on it. Tom Hamilton. And...
Mr. Cagiano.
Mr. Cagiano.
Kathleen Martin.
Oh, Kathleen Martin.
Yep.
And I'm pleased to meet you. It's the first time I've ever met you, Mr. Cagiano. So, that's great. I think we have a good committee, and I'm sure they'll all get it done. And that's what we're looking forward to.
And Enzo, to highlight your concern about the timing, if we were to follow the November 4th timeline, by the early part of September, the Board of Selectmen would get a update from the committee.
Yeah.
By the latter part of September, there would be a vote of the FinCom and the selectmen. So, you're correct. It really sneaks up on you.
Correct.
And by October 5th, the FinCom would be finalizing their votes. And so, yeah, it real, it is something to be concerned about.
If I may, I, I disagree with that. I think, I think the Advisory and Finance Committee listed many, 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 many things that needed to be looked at. People got up and spoke their piece. They amended this Article 10, five, six, seven, eight, nine times. I, I can't remember. So, people are aware of this, and I don't want to see it go through a whole winter and spring again without being acted on. I really want this. So, my opinion is that we, that we just hop right on this. And I think everyone involved, I, this is a very good committee. And the best news about this, Mr. Chairman, is that it's taken out of our hands. It's, it's out of the Board of Selectmen's hands. It's in the public hands now, and that's the wonderful group you people are. So, thank you.
Great. Great. The next, next item is trash collection. I'll start off the conversation, we have Jim Nocella here from Waste Management. Jim is our government liaison. And we will soon be moving to a two-day collection on the July 20th and 21st. We will be splitting the town into two segments. The first seg, the, the split is really at Spring Road. And so, Little Nahant, Bass Point are, will be picked up on Thursday, and then Big Nahant, the majority of it from Spring Road, will be on Friday. The webpage for the town carries this information, and will carry the Thursday listing and the Friday listing for each, all the streets that'll be collected. If you have any questions, feel free to call us. There's also a mailing that's going out to each of the residents that will identify this information. But this came from a discussion earlier, where there was expressed concern about just the kind of untidiness in which Waste Management was performing their duties, and the fact that we were having containers that seemed to be all over the road and missed situations. So, this was offered by Waste Management as a resolution to that, to allow them more time to do it in a more kind of conscientious way with that extra time. And so, that will occur July 20th and 21st. It's just kind of a public notice. And then you would ask, Enzo, for Jim to come here and talk about complaints?
Yeah. I've gotten, I've gotten several. The biggest complaints are the trash barrels, recycling bins getting smashed, thrown around. And people do pay a lot of money for them, and they don't want them, they don't want to have to sweep up glass and, and so forth. and they don't want them, they don't want to have to sweep up glass and so forth. So I'm willing to cut you a little slack on that, because we're going to go to two days. So I think it'll give them more time, because I know how hard they work. It's not an easy job by any means. The other complaint is, they're not always picking up the trash. And most people aren't going to call. When they call the town hall, it's going to be afternoon, and nobody's here. So we don't have a real number to call. They don't have a number of Waste Management to call to complain. So what ends up happening is, if it's after three o'clock on a Friday, if they call, and their trash isn't picked up, the DPW gets to punch in. And they'll pick up a bag of trash, and the town has to pay overtime. And that's unacceptable. So we need to, you need to know that, and you need to remedy that pretty quick, because, and I can understand that some people will do it. You know, they'll, they'll say they put their trash out, and they really never did. But there's been so many complaints about it. And they do come, you know, I, I get them all the time. So would you kind of speak on it?
Sure.
Let us know how you can remedy it. And could you give us a telephone number that we can call?
Absolutely. And, and you can publish the number. It's 800-972-4545. Yeah, 800-972-4545.
And that's actually on the webpage, under Trash Collection. So, yeah.
And, and so, yeah, we'd prefer that people call us if they have an issue. You know, the one thing that, when I was asked to come here, I was, you know, we tend to register complaints when they come into, you know, into our office. And, you know, if we see, you know, an inordinate number of complaints, which in Nahant wouldn't be a lot, right? We shouldn't see a lot of complaints. It triggers us to, to take a look and do some observations of the work crews, and see how they're, you know, performing their duties. But we, we haven't really gotten a lot registered with us. So I would encourage people, if they are having an issue, to let us know. But since we tried to put this meeting together, and I, and I couldn't make it, you know, we've been out, we've talked to our crews, you know, observed what they're, you know, doing out there. And, you know, yes, the, the two-day collection, you know, will help. It takes a little bit of the pressure off. It'll also kind of minimize the number of our workers that are here. So we'll have two dedicated people that we know are collecting the entire community for trash and recycling. Hopefully, they'll take pride in that and make sure that they're doing a good job. We tend not to get, as a matter of fact, this is the first board meeting that I've been to in three years regarding service issues. So we take it very seriously. And not that I don't like coming to Nahant at night. I love this community. But we shouldn't have to, to do this. This should be handled on a, on a day-to-day basis via the town manager's office and our office, to make sure that it's done.
And also, I think, Jim, it's, we should note the fact that, that one of the benefits of having two days is that anything that's missed on Thursday can be picked up again on Friday.
Correct.
And so, you know, that, that helps with making sure that the, the service is there.
Right, absolutely.
So if somebody misses on a, on a Thursday, they, they will, will they, you can always bring it to them on a, on a Friday?
Well, yeah. So if they, if somebody got missed on a Thursday, and they called our office, what happens is, we put in an electronic ticket that gets dispatched to the driver. So on Friday, if there was a missed stop, they can collect that, and then collect the Friday route. So the only issue might be, if it's very late on a Friday, and somebody thinks they were missed, then we might have that same situation. But now you're talking about half the route. You know, we should be able to get done a little bit, you know, quicker. And, and, you know, it's, it, there shouldn't be, and, and we haven't, you know, again, we haven't fielded a lot. I don't know what DPW is fielding, and what they're taking on their own. And so I would just ask that if they have to do work, if they can record those addresses, and at least let us know that. That's the only way that we can go back and coach the drivers. If they miss a stop, and DPW goes out and gets it, and we don't know about it, I can't tell the driver, hey, there's a house on the corner of this street, usually puts their trash behind a car. You gotta stop, you gotta get around the car and look for it. And once they do that, once they find out those, it's kind of tough to find, you know, stops, usually they're very good at it. Because they, they don't want to come back, and they don't want, you know, you to get phone calls.
What I'd like to see is, is a number for Thursday, not only this number, but because we're here Thursday, that they can call here and can get done as a backup number. Friday, I understand.
Yeah.
Friday afternoon is really tough, from 12 o'clock.
The office numbers here? Oh, because, because we, we do have the 1-800 number.
And then, but now that it's two days, the Thursday people, which is Flash Road, by the way, so I lucked out. So if they miss me, I just make a phone call. It's really hot on Friday afternoon, because at 12 o'clock, you know...
I mean, they should just call, they really should call us. And, and, not to circumvent the town, but look, the fastest way for us to resolve a problem is, when they call our customer service department, immediately they're dispatching to a supervisor or a driver. Sometimes the trucks are still here, and they can get it. You know, if they wait until Saturday, or they wait until, you know, late on Friday, and they can't get you, and they don't call us, that's where we run into a crossroads. So reach out to us, and we'll take care of it.
I only mean, the number here for Thursday is a backup. I would say the 1-800 number is what we do. Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
But it's nice to have two.
And we'll call you directly, Jim.
And I've seen, I've seen that, I've seen it happen, where they, they actually come out, you know, somebody calls, they'll come out, they, they come out on a Saturday once to pick up someone's trash. But generally speaking, if they, most people just call the police station, or they'll call me, and they'll, you know...
Right.
And they'll, what they'll do is, they'll go, I even often forget, once, one day, you know, DPW went up, but they, you know, again, they get to punch in.
Right.
Overtime.
Or they just drive by your place and tell you.
Yeah. So, and that's fine, you know, it's, but, you know, people are getting frustrated with it. So, and I can understand.
Yeah.
You know, it's difficult on a Friday. So now with the two days, hopefully that will be remedied.
Yeah. And, and I just ask that, you know, folks, especially with the change in schedule, it'll likely result in the truck showing up at a different time. And so, you know, we always ask everybody, get it out by 7:00 a.m. Even if you normally get collected at 2:00 p.m., put it out at 7:00 a.m. Sometimes, you know, misses are because a driver just routes themselves a different way, for whatever reason. And they get to a, a street or a home earlier, and people don't have it out, then they put it out after we've already been there. So, you know, we have, we have GPS tracking on the trucks. Anytime somebody calls, we, we know whether we've been on the street, or haven't been on the street. We can, again, you know, coach the drivers to do that. But I just ask everybody, you know, get it out at 7:00 a.m., regardless of what time they're used to the normal pickup, because that'll definitely change when we go to, you know, to, to the two-day collection.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Really appreciate it. Next item is the annual appoint, oh, excuse me, go ahead, sorry.
Gary Proharchek, Ten Chamberlain Circle, Little Nahant. Regarding the trash and containers, is there any chance of getting, you know, just like, containers for recycling?
Oh, recycling bins? I think we had, I had asked that. Is there any, can you provide us with any extra recycling bins? Do you have any small ones, Waste Management?
No, actually, we would encourage you to use a regular trash barrel, put a sticker that says recycling on it. It's easier for you to deal with. It's easier for us to deal with, instead of picking up two or three bins. They could, could use that, you know, until you, you know, until you decide you want to get into some type of different system like our communities use. You know, like a bigger trash, standardized trash container. Bring a barrel, put a recycling sticker. I could get some stickers to the...
The, yeah, stickers are available.
We have, we have the stickers, yeah.
That's the easiest way to do it.
Okay. What, what, what does it take for, to, for a community like us to use those standardized type bins that you see in other neighborhoods?
Maybe I can jump into that one. I don't mean to add another conversation, but it's, it would be good to get input from the Selectmen on this. There is a grant out there that the state is putting forward for helping towns to understand that process and purchase those containers. And so we've submitted for the grant. We don't have to use it if we don't choose to. But is that something the Selectmen would like us to look into? I mean, these are...
Regular, the big barrels, you mean, that?
It could be the big barrels. Salem, for instance, did the big barrels, something similar to what Lynn's done. But they've also, yeah, but they also have done smaller barrels for seniors, or those who don't have the space. So you really end up with three options. And so you have a, a large recycling, a trash, and then an alternative for the smaller barrel. But what it does is, it standardizes. And in the communities that that has occurred, it has been met with overwhelming support. Because what it does, it just cleans up the appearance. It makes it more efficient. The carts are designed in such a way that you can wheel them out very easily. Their, their center of balance is perfect. I mean, I, I'm actually a Lynn resident, so I've, I've had almost three years of experience with this, and I love it. So if the Selectmen would like, what we can do is, I can come back and speak to that issue a little bit more. I know this is kind of a, an addition to the agenda. And I would encourage the residents to also weigh in on this as well.
Okay. Thank you.
For those out there, what, what Jim had said was, to use the trash barrel for the recycling, and we can put stickers on the trash barrels. I'm sure some of you couldn't, and the town has the reas, the stickers you put on the barrels. And it's now gone to, and if I may throw in my two cents, Mr. Lombard had mentioned, and I agree 100% that we have to not get the larger ones, because we're the senior citizens. But we've covered that.
Yeah.
It would be, just to, remember, we have a lot of senior citizens that, you know...
We've actually reached out to Salem, who has the alternative size for seniors, and spoken with their council on aging. And their council on aging said that it's been very well-received.
Okay.
And again, I think it's the ease of which the carts are used, and the fact that they only have to use one, one cart versus dragging multiples out there. And so it does seem like it's well-received in the communities that it has been implemented.
There was once a committee established, the Solid Waste Committee. Do they have any resources that, or grants they can get their hands on that could provide these kinds of receptacles for people?
Well, this is really the only, the same grant, the only grant. And again, we've submitted for it, and so we're in the queue. Again, I'll bring it forward to the next Selectmen meeting, to have that discussion about what that queue means. And then if we feel comfortable with it, we'll just proceed. But what it does is, offers funding for the purchase of the containers. And we've spoken with Waste Management. Waste Management has indicated that, much to our happiness, is that on the majority of our streets, we can implement an automatic pickup. On the streets that are limited in their size, we, you would do a, collect by hand, or wheel them to a point where you can collect them outside? Maybe you can, yeah.
Yeah, please.
Yeah. So what we would have to do is really complete a full evaluation, because it, it is difficult, once you go to that system. The trucks are a different style truck, and it's hard to, to load by hand. It really has to be loaded with the, it's like a mechanical arm that picks it up. And so, you know, we can do that. If, if you think there's interest, we can look at that. And then, you know, we'd have to come up with a plan. If there's just a few areas that, you know, couldn't be serviced with the containers, and then, you know, we'd have to come up with an alternative plan to send a specialized truck in to do that. But, you know, we can do a full evaluation on that. It, you know, I know, I know Nahant pretty well, and, and I think it's, you know, I think it's conducive to, to most streets. I mean, if you think about Salem and Lynn, they all have some pretty tight areas in those pockets of those cities, and we're able to, you know, to move, maneuver around with those as well.
Great. Thank you, Jim.
Moving on, Jeff.
Moving along to the annual appointments. We have before us the, the annual appointments. They come to us each year about this time. And what we're looking to do is, set up the appointments for the new fiscal year, which starts July 1st. We have a set of appointments. The Selectmen have some appointments listed in the first vote. You need to confirm my appointments in the second vote. And then the moderator has a separate set of appointments that exist, that are on either of those votes. So what you have before you is the full appointment schedule. And then you also have the first vote, which is the Selectmen, and then a confirmation in the second vote.
Got you. Okay.
Sorry, it's a little complex.
I move the Board of Selectmen appoint the following for 2017 to 2018. Coast Guard Housing Design and Development Advisory Committee, eight people, Paul Pan Manaty and Robert Cagiano, Mark Cullinan. Lynn Water and Sewer Management Advisory is vacant. Logan Airport Advisory Committee, Robert D'Amico. Massport Authority Advisory Committee, Robert D'Amico. Metropolitan Area Planning, vacant. MWRA Advisory Board, vacant. Town Charter and Bylaw Study Committee, Carol Nelson, Steve Smith, James Ward.
Okay. I will second that motion. Mr. T?
Discussion. All right. I'd like to thank them all. It's not easy.
All right, very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the second vote?
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to confirm the town administrator's appointment as presented.
I will second that. Discussion, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Then following the annual theme that we have going here, we have the annual fees. And you will find the fee schedule that's attached. And in there, what we have are some minor changes. We have water and sewer rates that were changed. Those change annually to reflect the, the budget for the year and the debt schedule. We also have ambulance fee changes that were discussed at a previous, and approved at a previous Selectmen meeting. And then Kelly Greens will be looking at dropping a trail fees as of January 1st. But that's a January 1st, so it falls a different cycle, and we'll come back for a vote on that. Other than that, the fee schedule is, as you've seen it, from year to year. So I need a vote on that.
I move we approve the fee schedule as is presented to us.
Okay, I'll second that. Discussion, discussion. Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Great. Whipping right along. You would ask that we have a, some input from the DPW director, Dennis Ball, regarding Fox Hill and the drainage, just as an update. What he identifies in a memo is that there are three elements in that larger issue. And just so the public is aware, this has to do with the Fox Hill, Ward Road, Castle Road drainage problem down there in Lowlands by the parking lot. And this has been an historic issue, and is something that has been problematic for the residents, especially on the Ward Road area, and the lower section of Fox Hill. So the DPW director will be moving forward quickly. As a matter of fact, he's already done one item, which has been done very well. The first item is that the drainage ditches that run basically between Ward Road and the Lowlands parking lot, they needed to be dredged, and they have been dredged by mosquito control. And that was part of a grant that we received last year. The dredging was incredible. If you've not had a chance to go down there and see it, they did a remarkable job. I was actually joking that there was an expectation we would have navigable waters. I think we actually have navigable waters. So kudos to mosquito control for doing that. And again, it was free. It was part of a grant, so that's wonderful. And then the DPW director will soon be moving forward with cambering the drain lines. There are drain lines that run between Ward Road, Fox Hill Road, and then there's one that runs across Castle. We believe that the main drain line between Ward and Fox Hill has actually collapsed, so we'll get confirmation on that. And then we can actually repair that in-house, and so we will do so. And then the final one is, there is a property on Castle Road that has removed a dune. It's a small area of their property, but they removed the dune that protected Castle Road from the storm surge. And that has been on the Conservation Commission's list to address for some time. And so we have started the process. We've sent out a certified letter, starting that process, to get that dune replaced. We have, in the past, during storm surge, has been putting out a Jersey barrier. That only works partially. The water still gets into and floods Castle and Fox Hill. So we're starting the process. Council's aware of it, and we will be pursuing that and have that hopefully resolved by this coming winter. So as you can see, the only thing that's really pending is the cambering of the drain lines. And Dennis Ball will be pursuing that soon. Again, I would highly recommend you taking your canoes out to the new canals of the Lowlands there. Mosquito Control did an excellent job.
Yeah, I, I noticed that. I went down there. They did a really good job. And once he hooks up, there's drain, the drainage system from Fox Hill Road to that, it'll drain nicely.
Exactly.
And that shouldn't be a problem anymore. So Fox Hill won't be in the water as much, which is, which is a good thing. It's been, they've waited long enough, so...
They've waited a long time. Some of the people down there had asked me to talk to you and the DPW director about putting a berm up for their driveways. And I was like, oh, boy. But now we don't have to worry about that.
Now we shouldn't have to worry about that. And, and the concept, we've talked about it in a lot, some of our other meetings, is the fact that on Bear Pond, we have a pumping system that pulls from that end, and actually pumps the water out to the ocean. What we envision on this end is the same thing, that we will actually bypass the system and pump out of these canals. So it'll be like flushing a toilet, if you will. So we'll be pulling it from both sides, and I think that will please everybody.
That'd be outstanding. They've waited a long time. This is very good information. Thank you.
And T, well, I've got you on this one. You had mentioned a couple double poles.
Yes.
That National Grade has said that next week, they will be addressing this.
Oh, terrific. Thank you. They're both on Fox Hill Road.
Exactly.
Well, Fox Hill Road, huh?
Yeah.
Oh, and may I bring up one other thing, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
A couple of people have asked me about...
A couple of people have asked me about, they walk their dogs up on, on the backside of Ocean View up in, is that Bayless Hill?
Yeah.
And there are dogs running wild up there that...
Unleashed?
Unleashed, yeah.
Yep.
And they've asked if the dog officer could go up there?
Yep.
Just please?
I'll have him up there, yeah.
Just to lose it?
I know he has growing frustration with the situation.
I mean, this guy has a big dog and it's on a leash and a couple of other people with smaller dogs, so, thank you.
You bet. Next.
One other thing, I just wanted to mention. Get the, did you get the DPW down to the Lowlands? Where the, where the people, you know, wash their feet off, I guess, from the beach?
Yep.
I guess that's not working?
Oh.
So I've had a couple of complaints about that. They want to get that up and running. So it's the Lowlands one. I guess the pipe must have broke or something.
Okay, you've got Irish Town and then the Lowlands one. Okay, all right, all right. Not working. Okay, let me get them on that. Next item is construction time constraints. We recently come across some complaints from neighbors about an ongoing construction project. And what it brought to light is the fact that the town really has nothing in their bylaws that specifies a start stop time. Typical communities have a seven to seven timeline or something, seven to six, seven to five, something like that. And it would be advisable, I spoke with town council and he said it would be advisable for us to put into the next town meeting, whenever we have that, a bylaw change that really calls that out. The police department has, when asked, specify seven to seven because that is a standard in most communities. But what I've provided you is two examples of bylaws that we see in other communities and these are pretty typical bylaws. The first bylaw actually is proactive and identifies that between 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM is the limit for construction. The next one is to the negative and specifies that construction can't occur between 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM. So one way or another, it gets you there. And the second one, they also put it in as construction definitions. So there's a number of ways to get to this. What I can do, if you are interested in this, is I can go ahead and put together some options and then put together a warrant article that we'll just have in the queue and ready for the next special town meeting or annual town meeting.
That's a good idea.
Okay.
I wasn't aware that we didn't have that. I would suggest, though, for now, that if there is a complaint, that they call. And we use it as a noise abatement type situation where, you know, if it's, if someone's out there banging a hammer at 10 o'clock at night, that they don't use the excuse that, well, I can do that because there's no, there's no rules. But there are rules against noise. So if it's after 5:00, I would say noise abatement.
Okay? I'll talk to the police department. The police department, as you understand, is very good at dissipating these kind of issues. They usually can get cooperation.
They have admitted that.
Yeah, yeah. So let me proceed with that. Next item is, at a past selectmen meeting, you had asked that we put together kind of a newsletter. The COA has a newsletter, the Johnson School has a newsletter, and they're very helpful for putting out general information. What I envisioned is that after every selectmen meeting, we would put out information about what you've approved, upcoming issues, et cetera. So our crack team in the front office has put together this very flashy example of what one could look like. And if you could give, offer some suggestions or critiques, that'd be great. And as you can see, this one's dated, so we would have to update all this information. But this is what it would look like. And I guess I was looking for your input tonight on moving forward. And we would place this on the town webpage in a prominent location in such a way that, you know, we could transfer information to individuals. Like, for instance, we had a discussion at our last meeting about Canoe Beach. And, you know, that's information that doesn't get out there unless somebody's paying attention to our meetings. But if it was in a flyer like this or a newsletter like this, then, you know, it really gets out to more people. So your thoughts on something like this?
We'll review it and, you know, it looks good, yeah. I mean, we can review it.
It's a terrific idea, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd like to review it if I could.
And the front office, as you can see, put some time in putting pictures in, making it rather interesting and doing some graphics. So, you know, it's fun as well as informative, which is always good. Next item is, we have a few recognitions that I'd like to pass on. First item is Northeastern. The town has an obligation under what's called an MS4 permit, which is our storm water permit. We are required to test outfalls all around the island. And Northeast University, I'd like to recognize them for helping us in that effort. They've received a grant from Coastal Zone Management, CZM, and they are going to be doing that for us. And they're using it as a teaching opportunity as well as a means of helping the town itself. And so, you know, we've had some wonderful interplay with Northeastern recently. And so, you know, this is just yet another example of the kind of goodwill that's being passed between the university and the town of Nahant. We also just received notification from the school department that they have received the $25,000 annual contribution from Northeastern.
Terrific, terrific.
Their curriculum. And so, again, kudos to Northeastern for just, just a good effort in trying to keep their relations as good as they are between the town and them. Next item is SWIM. If you've been paying attention to Marjoram Park, SWIM has been helping us by purchasing trees that are replacement trees down there. Earlier this year, they replaced a maple tree that is, you know, it's a good sized tree. And then just recently, they replaced, or they planted two oak trees. And they're replacing trees that have disappeared over time in Marjoram Park. And we've received a lot of concerned citizen comments about the fact that when you're sitting in Marjoram Park, they used to enjoy the shade of trees that are no longer there. Or as you're driving along Willow on Marjoram Park, that, you know, the street trees have disappeared. And, you know, age, salt conditions, et cetera, have all, have succumbed the trees. So these are now replacements and they've been paid for and contributed completely by SWIM. So SWIM should be recognized for their efforts.
Terrific, terrific. Thank you, SWIM. That was, that's terrific.
That is great, yeah.
Why, there's enough a lot of work on that and she's been emailing me to death.
Yes.
About trees and it's a good thing. I mean, we need trees.
It is.
The whole committee too should be thanked.
Yeah, oh, yeah. SWIM does a great job, they always have. And it started with Paulie Bradley.
Right.
She was the, she was the originator, so.
Yeah, well, SWIM has been doing an excellent job. Then the last recognition is Ocean View. Ocean View annually provides donations to various organizations as a, just a community venture. They're really great at that. What you have here is a list of those contributions that were just recently made. So they made 500 contribu, $500 contributions to the following four groups. The Beautification Committee, O1908, Johnson School, and Friends of the Council on Aging. So that was $500 to each of those. And so, Mike Launt, we really appreciate all that Ocean View's doing and giving back to the community.
Yeah, he does. He does a great job. He does his thing down there. Does what, he does, you know, what we ask. He's never given us a hard time and I'm thankful we have him down there, so he does a great job.
Very much so. And also their new outdoor facility has become very popular. And so it seems like he's got a very successful business, so good for him. Last item is, from my report, is the proclamation for ADA Day. And we have it before us and it's July 26, 2017. And you have a motion on that.
Let me read part of it, or?
Yeah, oh, yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. Dear Town Administrator Shelgrim, on July 26, 2017 marks the 27th anniversary of the signing of the Americans with Disability Act, Disabilities. To commemorate this anniversary, the Independent Living Center of the North Shore and Cape Anne, Inc., request that the town of Nahant proclaim July 26, 2017 as ADA Day. I move the selectmen, Board of Selectmen vote to claim July 26, 2017 as ADA Day.
I will second that motion for discussion. Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Terrific.
The proclamation's actually on the next page. Do you want me to read it or do you want to read it? Mr. T? What do you think?
I'll read it.
Okay.
I don't know what he wanted, I just...
It's a short one, I had to do one, it was a lot longer.
That's true, last time you did a long one. Whereas July 26, 2017 marks the 25th anniversary of the signing of the Americans with Disability Act, ADA, and whereas we urge all citizens of the town of Nahant to celebrate the contributions that people with disabilities have made and continue to make, and whereas we urge that all citizens support the efforts of the Independent Living Center of the North Shore and Cape Anne, Inc., which is the voice of all persons with disabilities and their families. Now, therefore, the Nahant Board of Selectmen join with the Center of the North Shore and Cape Anne, oh, ILCNSCA it is, and proclaim July 26, 2017 as ADA Day to bring an awareness to this important anniversary and urge all citizens of Nahant to take cognizance of this event and participate fittingly in its observance. This proclamation is an acknowledgement of the rights of all persons with disabilities under the ADA and their daily activities, struggles, and triumphs here in Nahant. Given this, 21st day of June, 2017.
Very good.
Very nice, very nice.
Thank you.
I got my vote, thank you. If I could, I'd like to sneak one other element in. And this isn't on the agenda, but it has to do with the end of fiscal year. I've sent you some recent information. What I was striving to do is get you more information regarding the closing of the books, where we are with expenditures, revenues, et cetera. But we're still struggling to kind of wrap up free cash at this point. But what we're seeing in the revenues is that we're doing very well in revenues as of the end of May. And so the documents that I sent you actually show that in certain categories, they're almost fourfold, you know, above what we were seeing last year. So it's phenomenal to actually see that. And when we get to the final numbers, I'll do a quarterly for you, which will be sometime in probably the latter part of July, early August. And we can walk through all those details. But we also have just put forward the reserve funds. So we have very few reserve funds, we have only three. And I'd like to commend the department heads for really adhering to the budget message and holding back their costs and staying within their budgets as best they could. So when you, when you look at the combination of the well-managed budgets, the increased revenues, you know, it's looking good for this, close of this fiscal year. And again, I think the numbers, when we finally get the final numbers for June, will reflect that. But I'll provide those to you in the FinCon and we can do a presentation at that time.
Okay. I see, I see one of the departments, I know that the police department had to have a transfer because of a retiree.
Correct.
That's all he really, he needed, so that's good.
And then the other one was also kind of, in a backward sense, another retiree. So we're looking at the treasurer collector, same kind of effect.
Yes.
And then, you know, we're looking at Dennis Ball, who with the DPW also had a reserve fund as well. Dennis has done a bang-up job this year. And a lot of what you're seeing is he's kind of dusting off the issues and dealing with them in such a way that he's stirring up costs. So good for all three of them.
Yes, yes.
And that's all I have for you tonight.
Okay, old business. I do have one. Well, first, I just want to say this. We do need volunteers for some boards. The Alternative Energy Study Committee, Board of Appeals, we had, we just had another resignation.
Yep.
Cable TV Advisory Committee, Community Preservation Committee, Lynn Water and Sewer Management Advisory Committee, Metropolitan Area Planning, MWRA Advisory Board, and Noise Abatement Committee, Nahant Open Space Recreation Committee. The other one is the regular open space committee. And we do have a volunteer, Margaret Alexander. And I would like to send her an appointment letter and get her started on that. She's very energetic. She's actually going to stop down and speak to me. She told me she would. She has a spot in the community garden. She's young, which is great. She has a lot of good ideas, I think so.
It's Margaret Alexander?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me, let me pass that on to the moderator, as the moderator is the appointing authority for that. But I'm sure he'll be fine with that. And we can get her a letter as quickly as we can get that approval.
Okay, under old business, and I hate to bring this up, but we've had some rodent issues, as we know, in Nahant. And I know that they're still baiting up there, okay? I would suggest that the end of Summer Street, that we bait down there, it's a problem. It's a real problem. And I, you know, I think that we need to do that. Assessing perhaps on that?
We tried to get A1 to do that, but they can't do it in the park itself because that's Marjoram Park.
Right.
And so what we're doing is we're doing the wharf area, the parking area and the wharf itself.
What about the end of the street on Summer Street?
They said they couldn't do that, but let me check just to see if they can do the right of way.
All right. And we've sent out a letter to the owners?
Yes, that we're in pursuit and I'll fill you in on that in our executive session.
Okay, all right, very good. We need to do something about that. It's just not, it's a real help for us, go.
Yeah.
We need to take care of that one.
And on Little Nahant, we have three properties around Fallon Way that have signed up again this year for baiting. And, you know, that's an ongoing program and we'll keep, I'll come back in about two to three months and give you an update.
Okay. Very good. New business. T?
Fine.
Okay, I do have one. And I would entertain a motion. I want to start an ad hoc technology committee. I think now would be the perfect time to look at our Zobrio. We use Zobrio software that we use for the town's water keeping system. I think it is important to the town that we integrate the treasurer, assessors, accountants, and all the other departments to use this software to its full potential. This committee should be made up of the treasurer, if she's willing, the accountant, if she's willing. I'd like to see two from the FinCon, one from the assessor. And this could be shifted a little bit. And they should look at our software and with the help of a representative trainer from Zobrio, bring us a report on how to improve our system if in fact it needs to be. I think by streamlining it, it will make the budget process easier and more efficient and save the town a lot of money. I really believe that. I would also ask this committee to review the Modernization Act as it pertains to the treasurer collector, accountant, and assessing departments, working through the community compact system and the Division of Local Services. I would also have this committee look into water and sewer telemetry software to watch our water intake and billable water and our sewer output and billable sewer. And then on this end of it, they could also work with a new infrastructure, which is an ad hoc committee that I actually am on, to discuss how to tighten up the water and sewer issues. And we did have that conversation at that last committee meeting. And there are ways. We need to get that software in place so that we don't see spikes of 50,000 gallons a day and, you know, nobody knows about it. And, you know, we talked about their meter, this, you know, the Lynn Water and Sewer Sewer Meter always differs from ours. Theirs is not quite as good as ours, you know? Of course, because ours always produces less. So I would entertain that motion, T, that we get that rolling.
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So...
Let me speak with these individuals and the FinCon and get that rolling.
I think it's important. I think that we need to...
I agree.
Get this rolling. And the other thing I would like to talk about is water bills. I think that we need to have the, that department take a look at billing either quarterly or monthly. I think it's nice that when people get a monthly bill, just like a regular utility, it's okay to pay it. But when you get one for $700 and you keep forgetting that, you know, that's coming down the pike, it's, it's not a very good situation. So monthly actually would help the town. Because we keep, keep the ball rolling. You'd have less people in arrears.
Yep.
Or it could be quarterly. I mean, whatever, whatever they, you know, I'd like to see them come back with a report. And perhaps this committee can do the same thing.
Let me take a look at, you want to do a look at both water and sewer?
Yeah. Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Yep, okay. No, thank, let me, we'll come back... Yep, okay. No, thank, let me, we'll come back in probably the next July meeting and just give you kind of a quick report. Okay.
I, my opinion on that is quarterly's enough. Quarterly can handle. Three times a year, you do get that spike. The second bill, the summer one, is a spike, but, but three, I think quarterly would be sufficient. Monthly would be maybe overkill, I think.
My concern is that the water rates are going to go up because of the break, and water and sewer rates will go up, and people are going to see that huge spike. So we'll, we'll play it out. We'll see how, how it goes. But I think as long as we keep our revenue up, it's better for the town.
I thought, I thought the town did very well with the sewer breaks.
Yes.
I, they handled it very well. The, the emergency that the police sent out was terrific.
Yeah.
And they, you know, they said they'd come back and update us. I went down and talked to the people on Fox Hill Road, and they, they totally understood. And I said, I haven't forgotten you, but, and they said, no, 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 this is very big. Little did we know it was a million dollars.
Yes.
But 1.396, to be exact. But, but I, I thought the town handled it very well. It's big, it's the Lin Way, it's got to be done.
I would agree. And the sewer committee is working with Dennis. You have a meeting next week, and we're kind of identifying lessons learned. And so from those lessons, we'll implement change and be better prepared if we ever have it happen again, and pray that we never do.
Right.
Right.
Well, we have that report, and I think we need to move on that to the, how we're going to handle the infrastructure itself and start replacing it.
Correct. And one, one of the things I'm asking Dennis to do is that your next meeting is to actually start to prioritize, and so we can actually lay out the costs, the timelines, and, you know, work to come to the July 19 meeting here, the selectmen, with a report that looks at short and long term.
Okay, so you will ask Debbie and Kathy tomorrow.
For the technology?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And then we can talk to Brendan and the FinCom. And I think there's some, well, there's some good, good members on there that would, Laurie Girardella, who's very up to date with that stuff, because she works for the City of Revere.
Yep.
Ken, Ken's a big technology guy, Brendan. So in streamlining that whole system, and, you know, it's going to, the whole budget process, I mean, we won't be right down to the wire at the very end, you know, come town meeting. I think that, put this all together, all the systems, you know, work together, assessors, accountant, treasurer, every, every department, so.
I'll reach out to the FinCom and get their appointments or their designees for that. But you're right, they have some good people on there.
Okay. We are going to go into executive session to contract negotiations. Any, any closing thoughts, anybody?
Not to return to open session.
Okay, so I move that the board of selectmen goes into executive session, not to return to open session.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. This motion, this meeting is adjourned.
We now have some paperwork we need you to sign.